Good morning loves. Today is Monday and I just got done, it is. Oh shoot, but it is eleven forty-eight. I just got done working out. I've been lazy today. Well, in a way that I ate a big breakfast and I did not feel like working out immediately. After eating the big breakfast. So that's what messed me up this morning. So I decided to go sit back in my bed for two hours and scroll TikTok. I know, I know. Not conducive to the success I want, I know. But I'm being honest. But now, I got done working out. Now I'm gonna sit my head behind on my couch and study. If you're new here, this channel is all about beauty vlogs and lifestyle vlogs. And we throw a lot of nursing in there, because currently I am on my nursing journey. So if you are on the same journey or you, ugh, you aspire to be on that journey. Come join your girl, cuz baby, life be lifein' overhead for real. Y'all, I started to do that lemonade look. Like just to give it, I know that thing like it's like clean girl makeup. That's what I've been doing. I'm trying to lower, like not do too much makeup like I do. So I had to drop my girls off at school this morning and then I ate bagel. And now I'm here doing this clean girl makeup. And then after this, I gotta be at school by ten. It is eight twenty-three and this is like a thirty-minute drive, so. After I do this, I probably could sit on the couch for a little bit and look at a couple more questions before I go into that. Um, remember if you don't, um, Tuesdays, my classes are not till one. But like I was telling y'all yesterday, tomorrow we have our pass fail math. Not tomorrow. Next week is our pass fail math test. So they're giving us review sessions to go over stuff that we struggle on. Which I feel a little, feel a little confident about my math test, so. But I'm still gonna go. Because I would rather show up for help and be in the midst of questions being answered, asked. And if questions ain't even being asked, like being hot stuff, you know? Versus not showing up, thinking you know something and then they went over there in the review. And you would've knew that if you would've came to the review, so. And the teacher that's actually, see, this is where my issue is. I gotta make sure I'm getting those dark spots, cuz look, you can still see that. But yeah, I'd rather show up for the help than not have shown up and I actually needed the help. It's too, a little too confident, you know? And that test take you out of the water, so it's better to show up than not have shown up. But that's pretty much my day. My class don't start till, my actual lecture class don't start till one. So that class is from one to three. Your girl is trying to get through the math. That's where I'm at with it. I'm a firm believer that God is gonna make a way. In our weaknesses and our trials. And I, no, that's where I'm going with this. In our weaknesses, he's strong. That's when he really shows you, like, see, I got you, you know? So I'm trusting in that, that everything. That's another thing I had to talk to y'all about. Y'all, I got my test right yesterday. So I did not pass my test. Now, to mention my program, I talk about this every semester. My program for the people that are new. An eighty is a C. An eighty is a C. Some programs, a seventy-five is a C, a seventy is a C. In my program, an eighty is a C. An ninety-three starts an A. An ninety-two is a B. So from the grade eighty-six to ninety-two, that's a B. Ninety-three to a hundred, that's an A. You're tracking with me? So eighty-five to eighty, eighty to eighty-five, that's a C. Yeah. Your girl. I was in the seventies. So she first uploaded it, I was at, she put seventy-eight. But then a couple minutes later, she changed my grade to seventy-six, so. And I don't like to, this will be my last time talking about my grades. I don't like to do that cuz it just raised my anxiety just a little bit. But y'all, we gonna get through this, whether or not. I'm hoping in a better way. So now, if you're anything like me, you're harming yourself. Like, I was really looking forward to passing the first test, cuz I really gave it my all. But it's the first test. This class, we have seven exams, y'all. Seven, and that's not including our ATIs, so we can break it up. There's no doubt, in my mind, we can't break it up. Y'all, this is my finished look. Like, it's just like my, I just put my lock and stuff on my eyebrow. Eyebrows, and then I put some mascara on my actual eyelashes. A little blush, a little highlight. You can still see my dark spots a little bit, but yeah, I'm not trying to, you know, do too much, but then put foundation on. Over. Alright, y'all. So I'm back at home. Yeah, I'm back at home. So my teacher. It is eleven o'clock. It's ten fifty-nine, so it's practically eleven o'clock right now. My teacher decided to send a text, not a text, send an email announcement through Blackboard stating that she was canceling the math review as I'm pulling into the parking lot of my school. So she canceled our math review. So now I'm like, do I drop all the way back home because my class don't start till one? Or do I stay here and just study while I can? Y'all, I left my iPad at home, so hits. I came back, just got that eating leftovers. And now I'm finna study. I had cooked salmon, rice, and asparagus last night, so that's what I just ate for lunch. And I got like an hour. So I'm probably just gonna, um, study a little bit. And just to get myself ready for this class, because. Y'all got a whole P's test next week. I'm just gonna study for my P's test and whatever I walk in today is what I walk into. It's a hot mess, like, I get it, the teachers are all fighting for classrooms, but I don't like this. At all. I don't like last minute stuff. Hey loves, so today is Thursday. Um, I wanted to kinda let y'all know what happened yesterday. Cuz yesterday, I don't, I haven't looked through my, my thing. But your girl didn't record. Um, I was like, ooh, I'ma record before I go to my test. Um, I could actually bring y'all in on my prayer, what I prayed before I went. Oh, and I have started waking up five o'clock. I set my alarm for five o'clock and I will pray in my closet to start my day. Made it my prayer closet. It's nothing aesthetic about it. There is nothing on the walls or anything like that. I literally, simple as ever, I'm starting my day with God. So I just set my alarm at five o'clock and I'll sit in there and pray for at least ten minutes. That's my, that's, that's my thing that I started to do this week. Because y'all, when I tell you I feel like I am under attack and I don't know if I've ever said this, but sometimes, which I'm pretty sure if you go to church, sometimes you be thinking that, dang, why can't nothing go right? Why do I feel like I'm constantly at battle? Like in a battle, like why do I feel like mentally I'm drained? Why do I feel physically drained, like emotionally, like I can't control my emotions? That is spiritual warfare. Sometimes it's deeper than you thinking, oh, I'm just stressed about nursing school. No, you're under attack and you need to pray. Like, that what we all, I was like, your girl need to start praying. Because like I told y'all, I don't know if y'all caught like little snippets of my last video. But my first week was a crap show. My second week, cuz that was when the tornado was going, tornado watch and all this other stuff. My second week, I was still trying to get a grip on routine. Um, and I told y'all, first couple weeks of nursing school, you're still trying to figure out your own routine and figure out how to organize your life, if you got kids, husband, even if you ain't got kids and a husband, you're just still trying to figure out your life. So y'all, your girl, like, my teacher, my, like, I'm trying to find a way to say this. Like, cuz I try to be very particular with my words, just in case somebody try to use my videos against me in my institution. Like, God forbid, but y'all, my teacher keep calling on me. Like, in class, she keeps calling on me. And it's challenging me. Like I told y'all with the last video with clinical. Um, she kept asking me questions and I did not know the answer to the question. And I don't know if I had told y'all about the conversation when we came to the car and she was like, basically. Um, no, I don't think I went into detail too much about what was going on. But long story short, because I work in the ER, she expects me to know a lot of stuff. And I explained to her, I did tell y'all that. I explained to her some stuff I don't know, like the reasoning into why we do it. I just know how to do it. So y'all, she asked me, she talked to me in class, we were doing like a group, a group assignment. And she was like, oh, read this, da-da-da-da. To mention, these are two humongous paragraphs, which, with a lot of information in it. So then when it came from my group to go over the section that, um, she asked about. She was like, Cam Bria, I want you to tell me about so-and-so. And I'm like, da-da-da-da, and she's like, and? And I'm like, da-da-da-da, and she's like, and? And I'm like, ma'am, I don't know what other answer you want. I gave you two answers already. So y'all, it is, and then I had my next class, yeah, yesterday. Y'all, I just been over it, like over it. It's like challenging because it's like. I, the way I explain it, when, like, the way I process this. My walk in Christ, I learned to drop the expectations that man put on me. And when I mean by man, when I'm around people, usually like friends, families, you know, or associates, or people I just don't know. Being in casual conversation, sometimes people try to place their expectations on you. Like, oh, I probably expected you to be doing this, or if you tell them what you're doing, oh, I thought you would be done by now. Like, people place love, people love to mind your business. And people love to place their expectations on you. And for so long, even with me being in the military, giving, giving my life to the military for five years. Y'all, I was basically living, like, not living. I would say in a way, living my life for others. I was, that's a big sacrifice cuz something can happen to you any day. Like being on a ship, anything can happen, you know, and God kept me. But I was like, this ain't for me. I'm gonna leave. You know what everybody told me? Oh, that's a government job. That's a good job. Why would you leave that? I left for me because I know mentally I wouldn't be able to do it. I knew for the sake of my, I want to be present in my kid's life. No, no, um, what's the word I'm looking for? No shade. There it goes. No shade to other people that make that sacrifice daily. It's just for me per se, if I would've re-enlist in the Navy, I would've been on a ship for nine more months. And then probably came back and then been on a ship again nine more months. And no telling in between that time period. And then COVID hit when I got out. So the timing that I got out was perfect. Nobody knew COVID was gonna hit. So I say all this to say, I have gave up. When I gave my life to Christ, he told me. God told me, you are what I say you are. You are not what, um, in those shots. You're not what your husband says you are. You are not what your kids say you are. You are what I say you are. You are loved. You are beautiful. You are kind. You are, like, I'm gentle sometimes. Like, I'm sensitive sometimes. Like, you are what I say you are. You are gonna be a nurse. You are strong. You can do this. He, I am what he says I am. It, it's all good things. And the way I'm able to do this is through his spirit. So I just, to sit here and it's just like your teacher keeps saying, ah, you let me down. Maybe, maybe you can, um, maybe you can, what's the word? My words are all over the place, cuz it, probably cuz it just does not matter. But basically, I just felt like she was placing her expectations on me. Cuz she had very high expectations, because I told her I work in this ER and she felt like I should know all of these things. But I don't. So every time she asks me to answer a question, or she asking me to come up to this expectation of hers, I let her down every time. And in a way, I'm already hard on myself. Work with me here. I'm already hard on myself, y'all. So to sit here and I feel like I'm forced to care about what someone else thinks of me. It's been very challenging for me in this semester. And that's why, like, I just had my, um, yesterday was, not yesterday, when, no, Tuesday. Y'all, Wednesday I did not record. Today is Thursday. Tuesday, I had, um, weekly grace at my church. They do like a Zoom meeting. And I basically said, um, they do prayer requests and I was like, basically, what? Where my timer at? Nine minutes. I was basically like, um, can y'all pray for me? You know, I'm struggling through nursing school. I feel like currently trying to just find the organization and the balance. And I feel like I am literally defeated. And those are not words of God, like, that's the enemy. And then it hit me, I'm like, Bria, yes, you are under attack. Like, he's trying to take your identity. He's trying to take everything you hold on to dearly. And not today. Not me. Not this one. Nope, not today. So I'm just like, I say all this to say, y'all, when, what they say, don't pee, don't pee on me and tell me it's rain. Like, you notice something, dig in deeper. And in a way, I know a lot of people told me, cuz I have vented to people about this whole situation with my teacher. A lot of people say she probably sees something in you and she's trying to pull something out of you. I got it. I understand. And that's why I'm digging deeper. But you also have to understand, even if you're digging to try to get, um, get somebody to pull something out of them cuz you see something in it, understand that there can also be cons to that as well. I understand the pro, oh, they're gonna come out stronger, all this other stuff. Cuz I felt like I was dealing with that last semester where I felt like I was being picked on or like pushed to pull something out of me. And I get it, but in a way, like, y'all, I don't learn that way. It's embarrassing at this point, and that's where I've been with it. But I'm trusting in God. God's gonna get me through it. And that's where I've been in, and that's where my headspace been in. So I've just been like, yesterday I did not record cuz I just did not feel, and I was crying and all this other stuff. Cuz I'm just mentally trying to process every, the way I feel and put it into words. And I hope I was able to even explain it in a way that wasn't offensive or, you know. But my feelings are my feelings and my feelings are valid, just like everyone else's. So I say all this to say, y'all don't give up on yourself and continue to give yourself grace. And that's why I keep telling myself, give yourself grace. It's a lot of information that cramming into us to expect us to pass this and click and be able to treat people with all types of diseases known to man. So, and we're not gonna know everything. And like somebody, a nurse told me, you're not gonna know everything when you leave nursing school. Nursing school teach you to pass tests. That's all they're teaching you. And when you become a nurse, that's when you learn everything. So hands-on, doing it a couple times. It ain't just when you get out there and you be a nurse. No, you gotta do it a couple times sometimes to get it, just to make it click, so. Don't be hard on yourself and let's get to it. Today, I am going to study. I'm trying to finish up my study guide. Tomorrow I got clinicals. I gotta be there by six fifteen. And I'mma go from there. I'm trying to hurry up and study a little bit before my husband gets home. Cuz he gets home in like, I think, an hour now, cuz I did spend the other hour. But when he come home, I kinda wanna do like a date night, so we can get a moment to ourselves, cuz your girl need it. Um, but I just wanna be back for a little bit. But yeah, y'all, I'm finna study on my couch and go from there. But I hope y'all are doing good. I hope y'all are holding on. Leave some encouragement down there for your girl and for somebody else that may need it. Y'all, this pro, this, it's, just leave some encouragement. I love y'all. Good morning, y'all. So today is actually Saturday. Oh, let me put my scarf on. Um, today is actually Saturday. I wanted to, um, conclude the video. I was gonna conclude it yesterday. But y'all, I had my second clinical day yesterday. Well, it was actually my first clinical day. Cuz my, um, last week was kinda like an orientation, kinda. Like we were going over paperwork and stuff like that. We didn't get like an actual patient assignment. But this week was the first week we actually got a patient assignment. So, um, my clinical day Friday was actually really good. I got there really early. It was like six-ten. But, um, no, I got there at like six, I think, six oh-five. And we had to be there by six fifteen. The thing is, when, the reason why I wasn't recording on Friday is because when the day started, it was like going. So it was like no moment to like sit there and be on your phone. Like, which is a good thing, because it's like, okay, but, um, there was a couple issues we had at this facility that I'm at. But, um, for the most part, I got to see a lot of cool things. Um, my patient had, like, my patient had a lot going on. My patient had a peg tube. My patient had a trach. And I was able to, you know, take meds out of the pixies and do cool stuff like that. So it was pretty interesting. Like just, you know, and being with a nurse that know what she doing. And she didn't mind me being with her. Because every time she was in the middle of doing something and I did not understand why she was doing it. I would respectfully ask her, hey, why do y'all do this? Or, hey, what are you supposed to do with this? And I touched make-a-my-ice several times there. Like it was, it was, um, it was really a good day yesterday, really. My nurse even gave me a hug before I left, so I was like, oh, she really liked me. But, um, Friday was actually good, y'all. And then afterwards, we had a post-conference. And we kinda just went over what we felt like our care plan would be about. And in my med search two class, I have to, um, do three good care plans that will be a ninety. So I feel like this care plan I had, cuz my patient had so much going on. Um, cuz she had a trach and the fact is that they were getting rid, trying to, um, heal her, um, airway. So they were getting rid, doing the steps to get rid of the trach. So she was able to eat cereal and all types of stuff, which I didn't understand that. But, um, that's why I got a deep dive. And that's what my care plan is gonna be about, like. So, um, yesterday, when I got home, that's all I did. All I did was care plans. And for the ones that know, know, baby, your care plan, you gonna be sitting there for a hot minute. Because I say it gets easier later on in the semester, cuz people are like, oh, it don't take me that long. Depending on what your teacher's expectations are, I'm trying to, like, I'm not trying to do too much, but I'm trying to do just enough so I can see where she's at with the way she grades. Um, but, yeah, so that's why I was doing all that yesterday. And then later on that night, I was like, dang, I haven't studied for my Med Search test. Because, like I said, this week, I got my health calculations exam, pass or fail, and I have my Med Search Two exam. So, today I will be studying for Med Search Two, and also, um, doing some med problems on the side. But I really want to finish my care plan, because if I finish my care plan, um, I won't have to worry about that. So, yeah, um, that's gonna be my day. Um, I just wanted to conclude this video. So, the word I have for today is, I'm so sorry. I'm so congested. I don't know what is going on with my, my system. But y'all, I always tell y'all, have grace with yourselves. And my teacher was not only today, like, she seen that I was in it, I was doing it. I had somewhat kinda led and knew what I was doing in a way, like, and she messed with me. Like, if I had questions, she would sit and answer it with me, like, she's very understanding. So, yeah. I just feel like, oh, that's what I was gonna say. Y'all, if I'm being completely transparent, um, nobody comes and picks our kids up, um, to watch them or anything like that. Like, nobody, like, helps us with, like, the journey that I'm on. Um, it's just me and my husband, really. And I honestly want to tell, like, I know, like, faith, listen. Um, you feel like, okay, let me help this person, if you anything like me. I wanna help this person, I wanna help this person, and I say this, because there's a situation that has just rose, a, a rose, risen. There's a situation that has just came to my attention, and I'm fighting between going to be there for somebody or staying to stay. Y'all, stay to stay. This is just a season. Eventually, when you become that nurse, you'll be able to be there as much as you can. But right now, this is your sacrificial moment. You have to focus on yourself. You have to focus on your own time spending in these books, y'all. It's a lot of work, but I'm honestly like, it has to be done. Um, I can't be there for somebody else that can't be there for me, period. And even if, like, I feel like right now, I'm not in the season to be the, the greatest friend right now. I just can't, because I have to be selfish, like, my kid has, um, my kid's school is very last-minute. But yesterday, on Friday, I was emailed by the teacher, and they're like, oh, um, which, my oldest teacher had said, oh, she's student of the month, and we'll let you know when they're doing the celebration. Mention, both the teachers, my little one, Alana and Mia, both the teachers wrote me Friday and said the celebration is gonna be on Monday. Now, for some of y'all, that might not be last-minute, but for me, it is, because I got a test review on Monday, and I have, um, the help, I have, for both of my tests, the teachers are doing a review on Monday. So do you think I'm gonna miss that? I can't. I can't. I wanna do better than what I did last, um, last week's on my grades. Like, I want to score higher, because I know it's in me, so I can't miss it. I'm like, babe, you gonna have to show up for both of us. I would love to be there. It's just, there's no way I can be there right now, because that's priority right now. And it sucks to be in that situation, but this is, 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 um, temporary sacrifice for something that is gonna bless your family, bless you in the long run. Think about it like this, you are not doing the sacrifices alone. You're with other women and men that are doing sacrifices to provide for themselves, for their family, whoever it may be, for, you know? So, don't give up on that. I love y'all. I pray y'all have a great, fantastic week, and I'm gonna end it at that. I love y'all.